Good evening and welcome to this edition of the InFocus Candidate Forum being made possible by Whitewater Community Television, the Wayne County Area Chamber of Commerce, and Hometown Media Group. We've got Brenda McLean from Hometown Media Group joining us this evening. We're glad you're able to join us for this edition of the InFocus Candidate Forum. We are going to be speaking with candidates running for the Dublin Town Council coming up here in just a few minutes, but let's see if I can get the good housekeeping seal of approval this week. I didn't last week. I misspoke about a couple of things, so let's get the housekeeping out of the way. First of all, I want to remind you that WCTV's annual meeting is taking place on Tuesday the 17th at the Innovation Center at 5:00 PM. If you're a member of the organization, you should have already received your invitation. If you're not a member of the organization but want to find out a little bit more about what we do, what our last fiscal year was, we'll be giving out some awards. Feel free to come by the Innovation Center. We'll be there from 5:00 until about 5:45 or so. There's an event coming up at 6:00 that I know some people are going to want to get to, so we're going to keep our annual meeting relatively short. It is the Hype Award. The Hype Mayoral Debate is actually coming up. Young Professionals Debate is coming up on Tuesday night, the 17th. That's also going to be at Civic Hall Performing Arts Center. Door is there, open at 5:30. The debate starts at 6:00. The reason that's going on and the reason we're here for the InFocus Candidate Forum is that you have a chance to select those people who are closest to the government to you. Town council, city council, clerk. If you're not registered to vote, or if you're not sure whether you're registered to vote, you can find out by going to indianavoters.com. You can check your voting status, or you can register to vote. If you prefer to do those type of things in person, you can do that by going to 301 East Main Street. That's the clerk's office in the Wayne County Courthouse, Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 4:30. They will be very happy to help you out. You still have time. Voter registration ends Monday, October 7th, but please don't wait until the last minute. Go ahead and get that done. As I mentioned, we are here to hear from candidates running for town council in Dublin. There are seven people running for five seats. Have that much of it right so far? Okay. We have six of them here, so wide picture. We're going to give them each a chance to kind of introduce themselves, but periodically, because of our, the size of our communities, because we run into each other a lot and there are relationships that we have with people, we sometimes have minor conflicts of interest. We want to bring those out. You've seen me do it when I've interviewed members of the WCTV board and their day jobs and things of that nature. We always mention that. Brenda's got one that she wants to mention for tonight.
I do. Thank you, Eric. I just need to disclose that Rex Snyder's wife, Margot, we are very pleased to have her as an employee, but I want to make sure that I fully disclose that relationship before we get started, so thank you.
It hasn't changed how things are done. None of the candidates know any of the questions that are going to be asked. I didn't see them until earlier today, so I'm sure they don't know. We're going to give them a chance to introduce themselves. We're going to start with Patricia.
My name is Patricia Finley. I am a retired Navy wife. I was raised an Army brat, so Dublin, Indiana is the place that I have probably lived the longest. I am a communications specialist and I have been on the board for several years, and I have varied interests, varied hobbies, that I won't go into here, but that's it.
Thank you.
Keep it short.
Pamela.
Hi, I'm Pam Chaney. I'm, of course, live in the little town of Dublin. I am a longtime resident there. I was born and raised in Dublin, Indiana. I still have family members there. I have a brother named Greg. He's probably more well-known than I am. I returned after a 20-year lapse. I returned home to contribute back to my community. I love the little town. I am currently employed at the Work One Office where I've been for the last almost 11 years. I love what I do. I have a passion for people and pleased to meet all of you.
I'm Leonard Payne. I'm from Dublin, Indiana. Been there since 2005. I'm also a pastor at the Westlands Bible Holiness Church. I also own a music store that is located in Dublin. I've got several family members that live there. I made Dublin my home back in 2005, coming from Hagerstown, so that's pretty well it.
I'm Bruce Moles. I've lived in Dublin now almost 30 years. Transferred up here when I married my second wife, and for the past 23 years, I've been a police officer on the Cambridge City Police Department. I retired last December. I'm currently also on the town board and have been there for the last six years, and I'm very interested in my hometown that I make right now is Dublin, Indiana.
Hi, my name is Larry Walters. I've been a resident of Dublin for 47 years. My wife and I live in Dublin, and our daughter and son-in-law live in Dublin also. I am a member of the Cambridge City Fire Department for 56 years. I'm a retired machinist, and that's about it. I like the community, that's why we've lived there for so long, and I've got an interest in the town and keeping the town up and nice, and I wouldn't want to live anyplace else. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Rex Snyder. I lived in Dublin for 43 years. When I got married, we moved up there. I worked for the town of Dublin for 40 years and just recently retired, and I like to get on the town board to keep my knowledge and experience available for them when they needed it and stuff, and try to keep our town great, so.
Patricia and Bruce, I think, are currently on the board?
Larry and Pam.
Okay. Four of you are currently on the board, okay. Brenda, again, thank you very much for being here and being a part of this.
Thank you for having me.
And since we have so many, we'll let you get started with a question.
Okay. So I would love to hear all of you kind of talk about Dublin and what you see as kind of the future for Dublin. And when I say "future," you might look at five years and 10 years, and then tell me just quickly why you think you're the person to help with that? Help make changes or maintain what's going on that you think is happening and is going well right now?
Start with Pamela.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to answer that. Well, I foresee Dublin moving in to the right direction as far as technology goes. Just since I've been on the board, which is a very short time, there's already been some things implemented to take it in that direction. I think that more changes are coming. We're going to put out to more residents to see what their ideas are. I know that technology is a big part of it. Our millennial residents are very interested in moving forward and that type of thing. So currently, we're working on an auto pay for our residents. More of the millennials are also asking for an online pay as well, so hopefully we'll be looking into that. Our president has looked into a security system as well, so it's all technology-based as well. We're implementing some new computers, so I think we're moving forward in that. I think maybe we'll be a bit closer in five years, hopefully, according to what our finances The other thing that I would like to see implemented is more community involvement. I love the fact that Dublin has like a little town, like, I don't know, days. I also think the Cambridge City Canal Days are awesome, and I really would like to see our little town contribute in that way as well. Maybe we can have Dublin Days, so.
Pretty much the same thing as she's talking about. I would like to see more community action going on in our town. We have a great, what they call Dublin Splash Days. I think that's absolutely great. They used to have a little thing called the Fireman's Fish Fry there that was really great. It was really a community thing. I'd like to see more of the community get involved, more with the town council. I would like to see more of that in there. I've been to several meetings. I've been there when there was 15 people, and I've been there when there was two. So I'd like to see more of the people and hear some of their suggestions and ideas. I always felt like 10 heads was better than five, anytime you stack it up. We could always be at a point of views in different ways, you know? Just because we're sitting there, that doesn't make us right, you know? So it's more of a community thing. I'm there more because I was asked by the people to run. Several people had asked me, and I said, I've actually been asked twice to do it, and I've kind of backed out of that for the last past eight years. This time, they kind of cornered me on it, and I said, "Okay," you know? So enough talking about it, we just do it. So I'm really there for the people. I'm there also for the town. I want to see the little town grow. I would be open to more businesses in town. I'm being a business personnel myself and a proprietor. I'd like to see more business come to Dublin. I think it would, you know, bring in more revenue, and I think we can see our little town grow. We have a lot of money problems and issues in Dublin because we have so many things going on. It's a downhill-rolling factor, I think. If you didn't get it accomplished back four years ago today, that four-year role is going to be an eight-year role, and so everything's multiplied. So then you get more things going on that you can't afford either, so you need to take care of it as it comes up. And I think listening to the people basically and putting our perspective in place where it was going to, you know, benefit the community and the people itself, and maybe leaving some of the other things alone, but coming back to it later, you know? But kind of getting the town back behind the town board, you know?
We're going to move on real quick, and we'll come back if we need to. Bruce?
I believe we've done a good job at keeping our parks in beautiful shape, and maybe some people don't know, our park is also used through the high school. A high school softball team uses our park, and they have other tournaments and things down there, and it's great for the whole community, not just Dublin, Cambridge, Mount Auburn, and all, because, you know, we all support our Western Wayne schools. Other than that, I also am interested in the technology. I'm not up on a lot of the technology, but I'm interested in it. I would like to see, we discussed here a while back with AMPA about bringing solar panels to a place, you know, to go into our electric grid to help hold down the cost. It didn't quite work out that way, but I'd like to visit that in the future and get back into those kind of things.
Thank you. Larry?
When the wife and I moved there in Dublin 47 years ago, we had five Philly stations and two grocery stores. So at that time, it was a pretty booming business at that time, but we've lost a lot of businesses in Dublin, and I'd like to see a lot of them come back, even if only one or two, but it would be an advancement to the town of Dublin and a great opportunity. But our town is real strong. We have good people live in Dublin, but I would like to see, like Pam, more input from the town residents to kind of help us out and let us know what they would like or what they need for us to look at, and then maybe we can help them out that way. But if no one comes to us and lets us know about things, then we do not know anything about them. But I'd like to see more input from our people in town, our residents.
Thank you.
Everybody pretty well hit the subject pretty good. We want our town to grow. I'd like to see more residents move into town. We've been real slow over the years of new homes and stuff, but we are a strong little town. There's a lot of good people there, and I'd like to see if we can communicate with people and understand what they're doing and what we can do to help them, to help us. And the technology, we're trying to work our way to that. We, I guess, we isn't going radio read meters and stuff to make it easier on employees and the clerks and stuff. We just want to just try to make everything work together we can, and I think just my knowledge and the thing, people I know in town and stuff, I'm going to try to help out and just kind of help boost the town up in the next future here, so.
Great. Thank you. So Cambridge City is going through a conference.
Oh, I'm sorry. Wait.
Oh, sorry.
Started here, came here, my fault.
No, it's fine. Basically, they've said a lot of the same things that I agree with. I have been pushing for years, I would really love to have more people come to the board meeting. I think that our board meetings are, we don't yell at people, even when people are upset. We listen to them and we listen to what they have to say, because I think it's important that we treat our residents with respect, the respect that we would like to be treated with. And so I would like to have them come with their ideas. When I first got on the board, the fish fry was a big concern, why aren't we doing it? Part of the problem that we've had through the years is we need to find a way to create the enthusiasm and the people, to get them motivated to be a participant in the activities that we would like to see come about in Dublin. I remember speaking to a member of the town several years back, before I was on the board, and asking about some of the things that had gone on through the years, and she talked about block parties they used to have, and I thought, oh, how exciting that would be to be able to do things like that within the community where neighbors can get to know each other. And I know the people in Dublin are good people, you know? They have problems and they have issues, and we need to hear about them, because if we don't hear about them, we can't help them, as Larry pointed out. We have a beautiful park. I've spoken with Pastor Cox many times about activities and things to do. They have a community center at the church that he's told us that the town can utilize for activities if we choose to. There are just so many avenues we could go, and I too would like to see more businesses come into town and it be a little more expanded in that area as well.
I apologize.
No, no apologies.
My fault, too.
No, it took a lot more than that to upset.
Well, you all touched on some things that are related to all of my questions, so it'll give you more of an opportunity to elaborate, I think. But my next one is, Cambridge City is going through this comprehensive strategic plan process, and of course, there was a grant that is helping to support doing that. It's not an inexpensive venture. But I'm wondering, do you think, and especially as you've talked about community involvement, would that help Dublin if you had your own strategic plan to get more people involved and motivated to be a part of the ideas that you have, or help them bring their ideas out and maybe have some buy-in?
I definitely think so. Anytime that you involve the people that you're actually working for, I think you always get a plus out of that. I think looking at their ideas, like I said a while ago, as well as our own, which I'm not on the board, I'm a walk-in here, so I'm kind of, I use the word transparent on a lot of the questions, I won't know, but on this particular question, I would think so, yes. By involving the people, I think we're going to do better in Dublin. They're going to feel better about Dublin themselves, and I think a lot of the people that live there right now, I think I was watching the Milton thing the other day, you know, when they had them on there, and they was talking about doing like a community walk thing with the, getting to know the people that live in that town. I thought that was excellent, I really do. I think the reaching out more that we do, the more they're going to reach back, and the more we get them reaching back, the more we'll have a better understanding of what we're at and what we can do and what we can't do. And you get the people behind the board, you'll have supportive board. That's what you've got to have, supportive board and the people at the town. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that would be a very good idea to get the people involved like that. We've got, we have our board meetings, and it slips up on us before we know it, all of us. We get to the point where, oh, we've got another board meeting, and some people show up, some don't. We've had big ones a couple in the past because we've had issues. But when we don't have issues, sometimes we don't have anybody at the board meeting. And we've had board meetings as short as 10 minutes, you know, because no one's there to be interested in what's going on, and that's what we need. We need an interest in the community, just as we're interested in the community.
I'd like to add to that. I accidentally got on the board. I was actually on vacation, and Larry texted me and said, "Congratulations, you're on the board," and I said, "No, I'm not." I was in Idaho. "No, I'm not, I didn't apply." And he goes, "Well, they voted Jen, so you are," you know? The thing about it is, I say that, I mean, it's funny and it's cute, but I didn't understand a lot of things about community, how communities are run. You know, when I was in the military, I was, my husband was in the military, I was an ombudsman in Hawaii. We had 750 men on the ship, and I was the liaison between them and the family. When we lived in Virginia, I was on a board. It was, we had housing, but it was, you know, we didn't, it wasn't, we didn't own any house there, it was military housing. And the thing that I found is that my own experience has been, you create the air of enthusiasm for other people. You create the desire for them to come, and that's what we have to do. We have to be able to open up their eyes rather than for us to sit and wait for them to come, and it's not going to happen otherwise. And we do need to get out there, and I've mentioned before, we need to get out there and tell them who we are. We need to go out and talk to them. You know, I've done that different times when people are moving in, or I see somebody, I'll say, "Hey, I'm on the board, this is when we meet," you know, and I'll talk to them. I don't start off that way, but you know, I eventually get to that point. But I think creating that desire and that enthusiasm comes from you, you know? And I've just, I've known that from experiences I've had in putting on events for hundreds of people. It really starts with one person.
When I first got on the board, the first thing that I'd done, I went out and entered the community. Just drove by, people sitting on their front porch or just mowing the yard. I went out and introduced myself to them, and I asked them to come to our town board meetings and explained to them that we would like more input from the community. And the biggest response that I had received at that time was, "You're the first person since we've lived in Dublin that ever came to our house and invited us to a town board meeting." So I thought, that was, that was good. I was doing my job at that time. But I think this is what it is. It's community effort, but we need the people in the community to come to our town board meetings to let us know concerns or suggestions. Just anything like that would be a great help.
Let's go back toward the question, which I think was about getting a, maybe a strategic plan and getting community involvement with that. Is that something that you would be behind?
Yes. It would be nice to have a program where we can get people involved in, to get grants to help the town out and stuff with the issues we have, because like I said, we are a small town, we are limping on our budget and stuff, and the less people in town, it does hurt our tax rate and stuff that way. But yeah, if we could get some grants and input and stuff from people and see what we can do, it would help us out a bunch.
Pamela?
Well, I'd like to add to that just a little bit. Along with that strategic plan comes some financial responsibility. Just the short time that I've been on the board, instead of things being brought up with just one estimate, we have started requesting three estimates so that we can do some comparison shopping. I feel like it's the board's responsibility to be good stewards of the town's money, and I can't see, or I can see why the strategic plan would also help out in taking us in that direction.
Miss anybody? You're watching the InFocus Candidate Forum. You're watching the InFocus Candidate Forum on Whitewater Community Television's WGTV Channel 11. We're speaking with candidates running for the Dublin Town Council. Brenda McLean from Hometown Media Group is with us, and she's asking the questions this evening, so go for it.
Okay, thank you. So I'm kind of thinking I'm going to ask this a little bit out of order, but you know, you have had an unusual situation in the last couple of months. You had a house in your town that collapsed. Since that time, I've talked to lots of people in small towns surrounding Cambridge City, including Cambridge City, just different people, but we're all kind of in that situation where we have a lot of older homes, we have a lot of older or disadvantaged individuals who don't have the money to take care of those homes like they would probably have liked. And that was kind of the situation here. There was a gentleman who has struggled, but I guess my question is, and this will be a great thing for everybody to hear what your thoughts are, you have a little experience now. How do you and when do you determine whether a house is unsafe? I was at your town board meeting the other night, and you kind of mentioned that this is a very expensive venture for the town, and it would be for any small town, and it wasn't something that was expected. So looking back, because it's always easier in hindsight, what could you have done to maybe have, should it have been, and maybe I shouldn't say it that way, should that one have been considered an unsafe house? But do you have a policy where you are currently looking at homes that you are concerned about?
We actually have put that down to discuss in our work meetings. That is actually a situation, because we do, you know, the problem with this particular building too is that there were some issues that were coming up before it fell down that could have been taken care of, but obviously, he didn't have the money to do that, and so it's going to end up falling back on us, or already has, I guess I should say. But I think, to answer another part of your question, we do, and we have applied for grants, for people who have low incomes to be able to accomplish things on their house that maybe they wouldn't be able to do. And we've had participants in that grant on more than one occasion since I've been on the board, and that probably would be another possibility. But sometimes you can ask people, sometimes they don't want to participate for whatever reason. But that is something that we have discussed and we have talked about bringing it up at our board meeting, because this was a very difficult situation to go through, and it was very difficult, even at our meeting, you were there, you witnessed that it was not an easy choice to make. That's true.
Mary?
I agree with Pat. I mean, we've tried to work through this situation, and this is, this is one of those exceptions that all at once here it is. And you kind of have to work through situations, and we feel unfortunate for him, but we've tried, we've tried to work with him and do the best that we can to help him out. But then, at the same time, it's a learning thing for other communities that may have the same situation that we have gotten into. We're trying to take care of it, we're trying to work with him, but there's other buildings that are in the same disarray, and so this is something that we're trying to get worked out so we can get something in place for the future.
Because we, I'm sorry, we have criteria that we have to follow too as a town. We can't just walk up to somebody and say, "Hey."
Well, that's kind of the basis of my question, is what is that?
Yeah, and that's what I was going to say, that's why we've set aside a work meeting to address that issue.
So there wasn't anything in place already?
Not really, no.
And we have just appointed our new building commissioner, and we do plan on working closely with him, because that falls under his title also, and we'll be working with him and our work sessions and want not to get, to keep up on some of these properties and work with people.
Okay, thank you.
Rex, do you want to jump in?
I just, you know, being an ex-employee and stuff that way, an old situation we have in town and stuff, and I'm hoping to, like I said, hope to help out in the future here to help them out, either, you know, if I'm on the town board or not, but I still plan to help out on some of the homes and stuff, or, you know, anybody needs help, so.
Patricia, anything you want to add?
Well, I'd like to also add to that to say that even though we all have the big heart for the situation that happened, it very well could happen again. We are kind of looking ahead at that and have appointed a building inspector. However, we have to be very careful on the legalities of that, because we also want to protect the town's financial responsibilities and that as well. So we have a very good town attorney, and he does, advises us very well on what to take part in and what not to, so appreciate that.
I would say you really don't know what reaction you would have until after it's actually at your back door and what step you would have to take. I think it's a learning process for the board as well as it is any of us that's sitting here, to put anything in plan or maybe to research some different things to do in that area. But like I said, you don't know what you would do until after it's actually at your back door, how you could handle it, what with your, with your capabilities and the access that you have to the things you do, like she spoke here a while ago, that they have laws they have to go by too. So there's just certain things you can do. So really, I don't know, unless, and me not being part of the board, I think they'd done a real good job the other day handling it the way they did and the way it came about. I thought they were very professional in that. I know it hurt a lot of people, you know, and people's going to get hurt, but when you're faced with something that you're not familiar with, you have to grab a hold of your guns and do the best you can with what you've got to do with those, so. And that's basically where the town board was sitting. So, you know, I wouldn't know because I wasn't sitting there on that board, but I would say they'd done rather well. They handled it very well, and everybody was considered, especially the gentleman that was involved, and nobody felt any sorry for him than I did. And I guess we could all say that we wished everybody would take care of their home the way they should, and they should all have insurance, but we know that's not the case. So therefore, you don't know until after. So therefore you don't know until after it hits you.
Great. Again, I do believe that you were the first of potentially many communities that something catastrophic like that could happen to in our area. So I certainly don't condemn anything you've done. I, it's not, you know, not for me to judge. But it was all respectful the other night. I did see that and that was, I'm sure, much appreciated by him and by the community.
I'm sorry, I might add that it, when you, what you said was true. It is a learning experience. Because through that experience, we realized we didn't have any ordinance. We didn't have anything on the books. And so we've been researching also other towns that have those and trying to compare what we need to do.
I'm going to jump in. One of the things that I heard almost everybody mention a little bit earlier is the fact that you'd like to see some new business come to town, that you've lost some business. I'd just kind of like you to go around and just give me your idea as a board member, as a potential board member, town council member. What do you think needs to be done to help that process along? And can the town council help that process along? We'll start with you.
It just depends on the needs you have. A lot of people talk about starting a business, but then they go the insurance, the, just a lot of work into it. It just didn't work out the way they think it should. It just hard, it just, and I've seen a lot of business in town, you know, come and go. Forty-three years I've lived there and stuff. And it's just amazing what can come and can go. It's just hard to believe. But I don't know, it's just some places come on and start real good. And then we have a business in town, he's trying to get developed and still taking forever to do it. And it's just the money situation, you know, just if we had sometime a small town grants or something that could help these people out, it might be better for them, you know, help them out. Get them, get their foot in the door and get it going, so.
As town council member, can, is there anything you could do to, to help? Help that climate of business in a town you're in?
We, we've tried to help some of the businesses in town and everything. But the main thing that we need to do is, is kind of clean the neighborhood up a little bit. And this is what we're in the process of doing. But then at the same time, our town is, we have a lot of older people in there. And they, we don't have the income coming in. So they're not really interested in new business coming in as much, as much as we are or larger towns. Because they're situated in a situation that they can't get out of because they're on a fixed income. So it's kind of like when you bring a business in, they've got to be able to buy things from these businesses. But this, it's a small town and it's hard to get a, a big business to come in. Like our little grocery store that we have in Dublin, that's, that's great. It just saves a lot of people that couldn't drive to another town to get groceries and things like that. So that, that little, little store has really helped the town out as far as that situation. But so many people in Dublin are on a fixed income. And there, there's a lot, like I say, a lot of people on fixed incomes in Dublin in there.
You want to see some new business come to town? What does the town council, do you feel like you need to do?
I believe that beautification is one thing that we can do. Because with beautification of the town, we can bring more people interested into living in that town. I know it's not just Dublin that's got shortages of businesses. There are a lot of communities, Cambridge has went through it. They've had to completely regroup down there and go into antiques and things in order to keep. They lost a lot of different businesses. I'd love to see a hardware store come into the area someplace, whether it be Dublin or Cambridge. We don't have any right in the area. You know, we need, we need things like that. And even though we do have a lot of fixed incomes and older people, we've still got young people that are starting out in our communities too. And we all need business to keep us thriving.
Well, I've thought about this considerably for the last past 10 years. And I could really stretch out on a lot of different things on that. But the first thing we have to do is make it appealing for the person to come to town. You're not going to get them by holding one set of standards for everybody. I mean, Richmond does it, Cambridge City does it. They offer different things to different companies to come into their, into their township and to bring revenue into the town. You're not going to get it by fighting a company. You have to be able to work with that company and realize their side of things that they're in it to make a living. It's their, their way of making a living. And when you put limits and processes on the things that they're allowed to do, or even far as advertising, when you do that, you're actually taking away from that business yourself. It's not the individual, it's the people around you that does it. So I've thought about it quite, quite thoroughly, really. I get aggravated when they do that. Because the reason why is because I want to see Dublin grow. I want it to see, be good again. I want the people to feel comfortable again. And I think when you go after businesses already there or trying to set up a business, when you go after that, you're knocking them out of the door. We've got some people in town there now that it would be cheaper for them to move their whole business down to Cambridge City and start their business there than what it would be for Dublin. I mean, you know, that's just the way it is. I could, I've talked to several different people about that. So that is a lot of the play. If you want people in your town, make them welcome. Open your arms, let them know they're welcome there. Don't try and keep them out of your town, welcome them in. And when you do, you should have different ordinances for businesses. And you want to do residents. There should be an ordinance for a business, should be an ordinance for a residence. When you throw them all together and you've got an ordinance of something or a bill that you're trying to pass or make a bill or whatever, when you do that, you also have to consider that the person that's opening that business, they're depending on that for an income. That's not just their home or that's not just a place that they're putting up there. They're depending on that for a livelihood and income. So yeah, that's my, that's my opinion.
Well, I think that in order to get more business in, we need to utilize all the resources that we have at hand. That may mean the economic corporation, Wayne County Economic Corporation, having conversations with them and let them help us grow in, in that area. They're the experts there. And so that would be my recommendation is to utilize all the resources that we have in order to make, make things happen, to get all the information we need so that we know which direction to go to get it started.
Patricia?
We have talked before, we've had the EDC come out and, and speak with us before. And we do, we do need to utilize our resources. We do need to be very careful with the ordinances that we put into place. Sometimes there are more stories about those ordinances than we can actually say publicly. But I, I think basically everybody's touched the beautification, the welcoming, you know, having the economic help to have organizations that have more experience than we do help us to be able to make it a more marketable environment than we have right now.
Anybody else need to jump in?
Yeah, I would like to say that when, when they first got our US 40 done there, we put up some beautiful streetlights out through there. And the trees, they were, they were nice. They were below the streetlights. I could remember when they first got it done, I would drive into town. It was like you was driving into Nashville, Tennessee. I mean, just the beauty of it. Our sidewalks and our curbs and everything was so neat and nice. And you didn't have the grass growing between the asphalt and the concrete that we've got now going up our streets and so forth. I just thought that was just such a beautiful thing. And then when you drive through there now, it's kind of like you're driving in dark. You've got white spots and then you've got dark spots. Because the trees have actually overgrown a lot of the lights. So why did you put out beautiful lights and pay to have a light bill out there and put bulbs in them and so forth that the trees are going to cover them up and hide the lights? So when you come into town, most of the trees are taller than the lights that's there on that main drag. So I, I guess when I, when I look down Dublin, I see that, you know, when the grass grows between the concrete and the asphalt, I see cracking going on in the asphalt that's out on US 40 there. I mean, that's, that's the main highway. I see the cracking because the roots causes it to crack and stuff. So I don't know. I think when she was talking a while ago, she'd made a very good point about appearance and so forth on, you know, making it look beautiful again or making it look better than what it does now. I think that was a, a big issue for me when I drive in town at night now compared to what I did when they first got it done and how beautiful it looked. It really did look, Dublin looked like a very welcoming place.
I'd like to add to that that when, and this was the beginning, you know, like before I was there. But when, when we got those trees, because I asked about the trees. I mean, a couple of trees I saw were ginkgo trees. We just took a ginkgo tree down in our property because they grow huge. And my understanding is that the trees were gifts. I mean, we had no choice on what trees were put where, which I found kind of frustrating because I think that in those areas, you should have trees that are miniature that aren't going to get taller than, than the light posts are. So I do agree with that, I have to say. And I might also say that, you know, Leonard took a house that he lives in that he has vastly improved the appearance of it on 40 from when he first moved in. So I have to say, and I, I do agree with him on that, that the trees are very much an issue and so are the sidewalks and, and things like that.
As a matter of fact, at the end of our board meeting the other night, I was talking to Patricia about the potential for root problems, you know, tearing up our sidewalks and stuff. It's, it's going to be a problem.
It is. Oh eight, when we did the street project and stuff, a lot, state put in a lot of new trees. But the property owners, one of their trees saved. And that's the problem we have now. Those trees have got bigger and stuff and are in, in the light poles and stuff. And we've talked to the property owners in the past, trying to get them to see if they can trim it out, make it look better and stuff. But those trees is taller than the poles are because the property owners, one of those trees saved when they did the street project, so.
But some of the trees that were planted were.
The two trees that I've got by my place, they put out there and they're taller than the light poles. I didn't, I didn't put them out there. As a matter of fact, I actually went down and took two of them out of the way. Because when you went to pull out on each end of the street, I had five trees lined up here. And if you're trying to pull out, all you see are tree trunks. Now, they might complain about a sign, but you couldn't even see for the trees, the way they were lined up there, they were blocking the whole view of the road. But I did take out two of them there in front of my place. And I still have one that's in the light pole there on the right side, which would be the east side of the thing there that's in there. And I've talked to my wife just the other day. We're going to have to top it, get it out of there or something because it's just interfering with the light, number one. And we get a dark spot in our neighborhood from that. And especially the lady next door to me, she brought it up to my attention. She said, you can't even see them. I said, I know, I know, you know, it's, it's an issue. It's something that needs to be taken care of. It's a beautiful little town, it really is, if you can see it.
On behalf of the residents there that maybe had no control over what trees were planted there, now it becomes their responsibility to take over that care of them. Not everyone has the financial capabilities of doing that. It's very expensive to have trees trimmed. It's very expensive to have the debris removed, especially when they don't have any place to take it to, so.
Actually, it's the towns, my understanding is, because we have the workers go out and, and do the trimming. They're supposed to go out and do the trimming around the lights. That was an issue that we talked about.
They're only trimming around the lights though, that's not really taking care of 100% of the problem.
Right.
Because it's, if, if they only cut out around the light, you still have a block of.
And we need to have them top it.
And also, we can't dump back there. So if we take those trees down, I had to haul them all the way to Moreland to get rid of them. Because they wouldn't let me put the trees down there at the place. So I had to haul them all the way to Moreland to dispose of the trees. So it's still the property owner's expense that goes into that, so, yeah.
You're watching the In Focus Candidate Forum on Whitewater Community Television's WGTV Channel 11. We're speaking with candidates running for the Dublin Town Council. Sounds like they have some things to talk about. Brenda has the next question.
So some of the things that you've already touched on, but I want to elaborate on a little bit, are aging infrastructure. And we haven't talked, we've talked about that in kind of generalities. Talk to me about your thoughts on aging infrastructure. Do you feel like that's an issue for Dublin? How, what is your idea or what ideas do you have to help with that? Because a small town tax base may not be growing, as you've all talked about. How are you going to deal with that?
Patricia, I think you start this one. I think we've gotten around just about.
We do have some issues with aging infrastructure. And we have tried to, you know, when we're at board meetings to discuss the issues that we have, things that come up unexpectedly that you need to take care of. And we usually try to work them into the budget. And we also have, like, you know, our town building needs paint. Larry and I were talking about that the other night, that it needs to be repainted. Those are things that we can talk to our workers about and have them take care of. Some of the aging infrastructure I worry about that, you know, we're, you know, is our poles where I see wires down lower than I would like to see them. Those, those are some of the issues that concern me. It may not concern other people, but it, it concerns me because I, and I see it all over actually Indiana, not just in our town. I've driven down Boundary and on the other end and saw a pole knocked half down that's been there for months, so. But just, I think, I think the, the best thing for us to do is to take inventory of the things that need to be taken care of and make a list and prioritize and put them in an order, what we can do first, what we can afford to do. But we, I want to add to that too. We've also taken added responsibilities on in our town. Like we're taking care of the cemetery now. We weren't taking care of the cemetery before. There was a cemetery board that was suspended and it was handed over to us. And so that was extra funding that had to come out, come out. And then we did receive some funding to help with that. But, but that's another area. You know, there, there are other areas added to responsibilities that we've had, that we already have as a town.
I think the one, the one item that I would be most concerned with is the age of our water lines. You hear nightmares all over, you know, but, and I think there's a lot of the smaller towns in the same shape. Well, not just smaller towns, larger towns as well. So I don't know that we have a plan for that. I'm fairly new on the board. I've been there since June or July. Yeah, and so I don't know exactly what those plans are. Because as you know, we've been handling the, the other structure crisis areas. So we haven't talked a whole lot about that just yet. But I know that it's one thing that's on everybody's mind. I do want to say that we've got a great group of guys repairing those water breaks as they happen, regardless of whether it's 50 degrees below zero or whether it's 120 degrees. They do very well about getting those repaired and getting them repaired quickly.
And we would have to give Rex some credit.
Absolutely, yes, absolutely.
We have to give him a lot of credit because, you know, I can remember passing him on the road and my vehicle and he's down in a hole and I'm like, oh, please let them be okay, you know. Because we, and we do.
Much appreciated.
Yeah.
You're handling this, your thoughts, aging infrastructure?
Yeah, well, like I said, the water mains are decent shape. By the time we go down and fix them, the mains are decent. I mean, it, it kind of depends on the ground shifting and what causes the problems. But we've been lucky. And our electric, we, there's probably some improvement in electric needs to be done. I mean, it is an old system that's put in 1900 and stuff. The water system was put in 1935. So it's, you know, we've got a lot of aged law stuff. But we do our best to get the town fixed as quick as we can and, and keep it going that way. So we've been lucky. We've always had a good town board to help us out and stuff that way. I mean, I've seen about 42 board members come through my 40 years I've been in a town and stuff. And everybody's really helped out and stuff and really pinched in there. So it's been good working with them and stuff over the years, so.
We have, we've got good employees in Dublin. We only have three employees. But a lot of people don't, they don't realize what all these employees do. We take care of our own electric, we take care of our own water. They do their own mowing, the ball diamonds, where their wheelhouse is at. And I don't think they realize just how many, how many jobs that these three people do in the town of Dublin. And I mean, they, they do a good job.
Back to technology a little bit on this. We have looked into doing some site mapping for the infrastructure of the town and the piping and such, and also in the cemetery, which would help out our town clerk a bunch as far as that goes. If we could get this to map out our cemetery, you know, and for research and for just where it's at right now. We've looked into it. We've not went along with it yet. We've kind of tabled it because we had some other issues. But we are going to be looking into that in the future.
Is that just for the cemetery or is that for?
We're talking about cemetery and, and the piping for the town.
So all infrastructure, basically?
All infrastructure, basically, yes.
And you can even pinpoint where each transformer's at.
Great.
Then it would also keep a, an update, you know, how long it has been since that has been replaced and who done it and what was changed at that time.
It would help the workers.
It is a good thing. So it's what we're checking into.
We'll go to Leonard, let him answer. He hasn't answered yet and then.
Really, not being on the town board and knowing what all the situations are. Really, not being on the town board and knowing what all the situations are, it'd be pretty impossible for me to even consider the answer to that question, except for the fact that, uh, I could say, you know, there's a lot of people that said different things about our utilities and so forth in Dublin, basically being our light utility and so forth. There's, there's been a lot of talk about that. But I'll tell you this, uh, if we lose our power, uh, you can count on Rex, when he was on the board or somebody else. I mean, we may be out of power maybe, maybe 15, 20, 30, 40 minutes, maybe an hour. Uh, I think the longest time I ever seen was maybe like five hours, which really wasn't on us. It was on a different corporation and company. But, uh, we have guys that go out and do that work. As being a homeowner, I don't know that I've ever been without water at my house and, since 2005. And the most power I've ever been without, like I said, was one time like five minutes, but that wasn't even our guy's fault. I think having our utility and the guys that's working the utility is a great thing. When other people may be out for long periods of time, yeah, we got power, you know? So I think it's good. As far as building the infrastructure, I don't really know what. Uh, I, I see lines and things that may need to be changed, but it's not like that they're not doing that. But then you have to go like to a different scenario. What can you afford to do now and what can you afford to do later? So you have to take the worst, you fix it and then you go right on. And that's the way it works. So I, you know, like I said, I have no, uh, I can't have no input at all, other than the fact I think they're doing great.
Okay. I just wanted to address, I must be the, the steward of the money or something. So forgive me for that. But, uh, they, the system that we looked, the system that was looked into was very, very costly with a very, very costly, uh, annual fee involved in that. And that's why it wasn't moved on. Uh, that is something that, um, I felt like the majority of the board felt like that, um, it needed to be planned for. Uh, that, that financial piece needed to be planned for. So we haven't put anything into place yet. We haven't made any obligations. Um, I've also asked that, we get some other estimates. There has to be more than just the one company that we heard from that is offering this service. So I would like to see additional estimates to that. But yeah, I, I think it's a great idea. Um, there again, it's technology based and so it's gonna bring us up, uh, getting closer to where we need to be in that area as well.
Um, what Pam says is right. We did, we did, um, shelf it because of that. Um, I, EMPA is who we coordinate with through our electricity. We're a part of them. And they're, they are a wonderful program. We've, I've really, um, I think they offer us a lot. I went to a cybersecurity workshop that they put on last month and, um, during the cybersecurity, we realized that our infrastructure within like our computer systems, uh, we, we have to do some accountability there. Because I don't know, you know, in the news lately, a lot of people have been hit with ransomware. Even the place that I work with got hit with ransomware. And I think sometimes we see it in the newspaper, they paid the ransom and they just drove off into the sunset and everything's great. That isn't the way it works. And so we've been trying to put things into place for that. You know, NPR put on a couple of years ago in the, after the Flint, Michigan, that, um, they had done a study in Indiana that we all have antiquated water systems and we are all gonna have a forced upgrade. And then of course, we have the sewer system, um, with the Western Wayne Sewer District, Regional Sewer District, also that we're facing, um, that we're battling, um, over, I should say, in, in that area. So there are a lot of, of things on our plate, but I, I agree with what Leonard said. You know, our town is a pretty good town. And what everybody else has said, we have wonderful workers. I mean, I, I don't know that I'd wanna be awakened if it's 20 degrees below zero on a, you know.
Christmas Eve, four years ago, my power line came down off of my house from the pole. I called Rex. He came down on Christmas Eve and I was standing out there watching this man get up on the ladder while the snow was blowing and he got my power right back on. If not, Christmas dinner would have been destroyed. But he got right in there and did it. I think we have an excellent, just an excellent group of guys that work there.
We do.
You have one?
You're telling me yes or no, and I don't. Do you have one?
Okay. I do not.
Everything I have is, I can ask a, give me a one-word answer.
Okay. We are down to about four minutes left, so she needs a one-word answer on this question.
Or a five-second answer. Can we go that way?
Something short.
Okay. So if there was one thing that you wanted to accomplish bef, during your next term, what would it be? With the one thing by the end of it, you said, "I was, I helped with that. I was, I was responsible for that." What would it be?
Larry, I'm not sure we've started with you yet.
I would say accountability. How money is spent, how things are brought in. So we can account for everything to our community and the people in town to let them know where everything is going at that time. I would like to see an accountability of what we do.
Bruce.
I would love to see more participation in the towns so we could have the, the interest in bringing new business to town is what I would like to see.
Leonard?
The same thing. I'd like to see our little town keep growing and I'd like to see more businesses in the town. That would be an accomplishment. I'd like to see if I was elected at the end of my term, that it's grown.
I think all of the above, but the one thing that I would like to see focus on, um, would be the technology, uh, piece of it, to get us up to speed with that. Attract more millennials or more, uh, a younger, um, population.
I can't disagree with anything anybody said. I think the thing that I would add to that is I, I would really like to have a good sense of community involvement, you know, a unity within the place that we live.
You're the man of the hour. Everybody likes you.
Everybody talks good stuff and it means the understanding. Yeah, the, the people in town and town council, everybody could understand each other and work together. That's what we need to do. So.
Thank you all very much for being here. That hour didn't seem like it was an hour, did it?
No, it didn't.
These ladies and gentlemen are running for the town council in Dublin. Patricia Finley, Pamela Chaney, Rex Snyder, Larry Walters, Leonard Payne, Bruce Moles, um, also running, John Myers and Emmett Webb are the names that I have. So go out and vote. A couple of things to remind you of as we head out. Brenda, thank you very much for being here. Greatly appreciate it.
Thanks for having me.
WCTV's annual meeting is coming up this Tuesday. Again, we invite you to join us at the Innovation Center at, um, 814 East Main Street in Richmond. You can RSVP at wctv@iu.edu or give us a call, 973-8488. These folks are here talking and will be back in a couple of weeks with another candidate forum, reminding you to get registered to vote. Voter registration, Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 4:30, or you can do it at 301 East Main. If you wanna do it from the privacy of your home, indianavoters.com. Couple of things happening this weekend. It's a busy weekend in the area, so I wanna remind you that Moonlight Kids Fest is taking place, transforming our future from Glenn Miller Park to 14th Street. There'll also be some kids' activities at the Richmond Farmers Market. The Flying Eagle 5K is taking place on Saturday. You can register online, wchallenge.org. Wolfstock is being put on by the Richmond Parks and Recreation Department on Saturday from 9 to 3 at Middle Fork Reservoir. Definitely check that out. Also, this is the first, this Saturday, the first IU East Family Read is going to be taking place in the library, um, here at IU East, uh, in Hayes Hall. And in the Depot District, in concert, Depot Fest is going on Saturday, featuring the Jimmy Buffett Tribute Band, Parrots of the Caribbean. Next week, we will talk to Wayne County Commissioner Mary Ann Butters and Wayne County Clerk Debbie Berry. We'll be back again in two weeks with another InFocus Candidate Forum as we speak to the clerks running for Wayne County Clerk. Thank you very much.